Thank you for attending tonight's meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. The agenda will be displayed on the screens in the front of the room. You may also follow along by connecting to the district's website, wcsoh.org. Click on the district link, select Board of Education, then Board Docs, and select this evening's meeting. There will be two opportunities to address the board this evening, the first being Agenda Item 6.01. The first set of public comments is relative to Agenda Items 7.01 through 11.03. Please state the agenda items you are referencing at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity is Agenda Item 12.01. There is a sign-up sheet located on the table at the back of the room. Each speaker will have five minutes to address the board, and a timer will be shown on the screen. And with that, Ms. Marshall, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Ottman?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Here.
Mr. Bell?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here. We invite you to stand with us and join in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item 3.01, approval of the minutes from the Board of Education regular meeting held Monday, February 24, 2020. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second?
Any questions, discussions? Hearing none. Ms. Marshall, please call the roll.
Mrs. Ottman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. Moving on, Agenda Item 4.01. We are going to do a special district highlight and recognition. We are very excited, as I say each time, anytime we get to recognize the outstanding work done by our students or staff or community members, and tonight it particularly is a group of students that are serious leaders and strong advocates for education in our community. I'm going to go to the podium. I'm going to ask Dr. Kellogg, Ms. Marshall, and the board to join me right up here, and then we'll introduce what we're doing tonight. We have a Westerville Education Foundation that is an unbelievably strong supportive group for the education endeavors throughout our district, and I can tell you the person who leads that, that I'm going to bring up here in just a moment, could not be a better fit, a more able leader, and a more passionate person regarding the students and the faculty and staff that we have in our district. So I'd like to bring up Colleen Moidoo, the Executive Director of the Westerville Education Foundation, and Colleen is going to introduce the Student Foundation Group, but I'd like you to just come up and say a few words.
Hello. Dr. Kellogg, Ms. Marshall, members of the board, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here this evening with the students of the Westerville Student Education Foundation. Each of you has been involved in this effort in some way over the past year, so it's very special to be here, almost exactly one year since the founding of the WSEF. I read a quote today from Nobel Prize winner Kailash Satyarthi that I felt was appropriate this evening. "The power of youth is the commonwealth of our entire world. No segment in society can match the power, idealism, enthusiasm, and courage of young people." It was this belief and the recognition of the importance of the value of empowering our own brilliant students here in Westerville schools that inspired our initial exploration of a student foundation. As we researched the opportunity, we looked for other models out there, other student-led foundations that could serve as a guide, and we found none. As a matter of fact, I Googled it right before the meeting, just to make sure it popped up that I didn't know about, and some out there call themselves student foundations, but are in support of students and are not student-led, so that's what makes ours very, very unique. So one year ago, we shared this concept, a little more than an idea, student-led foundations, student funding, student ideas, and just importantly, a student-created organization. We shared this idea and opportunity of partnership with a group of students. The students here today are the students that accepted and took on this big challenge. The students, again, they did not have a model, they didn't have a plan, they didn't have a roadmap they could follow. What these students had and have is vision, courage, passion, creativity, commitment, and a willingness to take a chance and take a risk, and so much more. Founding the WSEF was not a spectator sport. It was evident the very first meeting that these students would have to be committed and involved to get this off the ground, that they had to show up and put in the work every week, every month, and even then, there was no guarantee that this would work. This was a chance, and that they could put in all this effort and maybe not see success. The WSEF is about student activism, student innovation, student action, and student voice. So with that, I'd like to introduce our WSEF president, Cassie Cotter, and Secretary Anna Borders, to share their experience and progress this past year.
Just over a year ago, we all met for the first time at St. Anne's Hospital. We weren't the Westerville Student Education Foundation then because it didn't exist. We were a group of students from across the district who hadn't expressed an interest in an idea. This idea was a simple one. We, as students, are passionate about issues that affect us in our world, have valuable ideas and perspectives on these issues, and can make a difference in our world now. It was last March that this group sat in this very building in the skybox and made the big decision to found the Westerville Student Education Foundation. We decided that its mission is to give students the opportunity and resources to take the ideas they have for improving their schools and community and turn them into action and
Since that time, we have created a board of structure and processes to support our mission, create a grant application and process that, while based on that of the Westerville Education Foundation, is different and evolving to meet the unique needs to support students and their ideas. We have held successful student think-tank events in October in students from all three high schools. Identified three pillars for student innovation, environmental sustainability, diversity, and inclusion, and mental health. We have funded projects, including Our Spaces, a project supporting mental health at Westerville Central, and Warrior to Warrior, which is a student-to-student tutoring program at North. We have met with district leaders, city council members, and presented at city council meetings regarding environmental issues, including waste reduction, recycling, and composting that has resulted in action by our city's leadership. We have presented to various sponsors and supporters to talk about our work, including Nationwide Children's Hospital and Sunrise Rotary. We have raised more than $14,000 to support WSEF grants. We have also created the competitive process to select WSEF board members, and we have just selected seven wonderful new members this month. Finally, we have also hosted the Second Annual Celebrity Art Event last week. Thank you all so much for being there. As we look toward the next year, the opportunities for the Westerville Student Education Foundation are so exciting. Although I won't be here to be part of it as I graduate in May, I am proud to have been part of this founding group, and I'm so excited to see what the WSEF does next year and in the years to come. Thank you, Dr. Kellogg, and to the board for all your support. Thank you for valuing our perspectives and our voices.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to call you all up now, one at a time. Well, one at a time-ish. Let's see. Okay, so from Westerville Central, we have Gabriela Alvarez. Yes. Returning to us from Ohio State, and graduated from Central last year, is Peyton McCarthy. Unfortunately, our two Westerville North students, I'll announce their names because they're so important to this process, but they're not here, Samuel Haga and Jaden Stokes. From South, we have David Bistrachiano. Oh, sorry, David. Cassie Cotter. Audrey Jones was not able to be here tonight, and we also have Anthony Velardo. Thank you all so much. This is truly, we found that the, with a new idea, that we weren't sure how this was going to work out, it really has evolved a lot over the last year, and I think it continues to evolve, and I think we've all realized the importance of our leadership in our community and the partnership and collaboration that can happen between the students, and that's truly why this will be a success, is because of their ideas, their passion, and your commitment to it. So thank you so much.
And before you're seated, she has thanked everybody for their incredible amount of work, but I think Colleen deserves a hand as well. And I'm going to send her forward to shake your hands and so on. And while Colleen is doing that, I just want to say thank you to the students for being here, but I also want to say thank you to those teachers that you've had and the staff members that have influenced you along the way, that have allowed you to obviously flourish in many ways, so thank you to the community of teachers out there as well. Thank you all once again for coming, and congratulations. Now, if you would like to stay for the rest of the meeting, I mean, yeah, the guy in the red shirts leading them out. That's just an incredible group. I hope you all get a chance to interact with them throughout the year and throughout the years. That's going to be a very strong organization for our district. Moving on to Agenda Item 5, 5.01 Board Report. Ms. Marshall, I believe you're bringing that to us?
Yes, thank you, President Velardo, members of the board. So I want to talk to the board a little bit tonight about the bond issue. So if you remember correctly, last summer, the board approved a resolution of necessity and then a resolution to proceed, and we were on the ballot November the 5th, 2019. Our voters approved a 1.95 mil, $103 million bond issue for new facilities and some facilities work across the district. So we did travel, Dr. Kellogg and myself, along with Mr. Hersheiser, traveled to St. Louis, Missouri, to meet with Stifel Nicolaus, our underwriter, to sell those bonds, and I have our municipal advisor here, John Payne, who's going to talk to us a little bit about that process and how all that went. So I'd like to introduce Mr. Payne to the board. I don't know if everyone's had a chance to meet John yet. John, meet my board.
Good evening.
Thank you for coming tonight.
You're very welcome. It's a pleasure to be here. Congratulations. You want to know why I'm saying that? The district sold its bonds to match up with the levy. It was a 37-year bond levy to raise 103 million, as you know, and the district sold the bonds at the lowest rate of interest recorded in Ohio's history since I've been in the business. Okay, it's been 36 years. I wanted to, before I get into some of the other details, just read to you, and I apologize for reading to you, but this is fun reading, comments that were in the Wall Street Journal the morning that you were in the market selling your bonds to investors. Municipal bond yields, which that's your rates, municipal bond yields are hitting 38-year lows due to investors' concerns. This was with coronavirus and the things that were kicking into the news system back then, a couple of weeks ago, driving up demand. Fears of the impact on global markets led to a wide stock sell-off. Investors flocked to munis, which is municipal bonds, what you were selling. And boy, did they. The new wave of demand Monday, which was the day before you sold your bonds, pushed bond yields to once unheard-of levels. Bond yields be important to us for determining what your interest rate was. There's no end in sight to the low muni bond yields. These were all in the same article the day before we were selling. And of course, the obvious, the falling yields reduced the borrowing costs for municipal bond issuers dramatically, and I think that that factor right there leads to these next couple of points. One is, in order to get good bond rates, you have to have a credit rating that's very excellent. The district's credit rating was confirmed as the second highest available in the country at a AA1, AAA being the highest. Very few of those around. AA1ed is beyond excellent. It's just investors are all over that, and it was a tremendous outcome, and I just wanted to thank the team that participated in the rating process. So Dr. Kellogg, and also Mark, and Nicole, and the other team members. It was a great presentation, did a little tour of the district, and it was very impressive, and I just, you know, we were hoping that maybe you'd get to that where nobody gets to go sort of level. Didn't, but I want you to keep in mind that rating, credit ratings are a campaign, not a one-time event, and so every time we have an opportunity to do what you did so well in that presentation is building blocks. And so that will bode well for the district in the future, I'm sure, but the final word on the ratings is, boy, there's a lot of good things going on here you should be proud The interest rate for a 37-year loan, average interest rate, all costs included, was 2.49%. 2.49. I remember, again, going way back, I just want to put things in perspective for you. When I first got in the business as in the State's Department of Debt, and we were issuing bonds many, many, many years ago, we could always guess at what our interest expense would be versus the amount we were borrowing, and it was usually about two to two and a half times what you borrowed. Now, this is, I didn't even look, but it's probably 50% or less. It's just incredible. Incredible difference in what you can raise today and what you have to pay for it. This is a great thing for everybody. Borrowing money is really, really affordable right now. The estimated millage for the ballot, and it is an estimate, things change over time, it's on tax values and other things, but the estimated millage on the ballot was 1.95 mils. Right now, on the schedule, it shows 1.61 after the sale. In millage, in the terms of millage, that's a huge difference. So thrilled to death by that. I want you to know, I just want to add to that, these are estimated millages, they do not take into account that valuations will grow in the future. The fact is, the millage for this bond over 37 years, in John Payne's opinion, will average less than one. There's no question about it, just as valuations grow and the community starts to, keeps growing. When you look around the state at other bond millages averaging, you know, well over five, six mils, this is, this district, by the way, a very low debt profile, meaning not a lot of borrowing out there at all, really in good shape in that respect, and to do this for this kind of millage is, it's just unusual, so you should be glad about With that, I did want to mention that, I know you have this, I think, in your packet, a little handout with some details about the issue. The one thing maybe perhaps that will illustrate what I said a little bit about the interest rate is on page two, that little blue graph. That really is an average 20-year rate. You have to go clear to the right to see that graph start to go down to the bottom, and then look clear back to 1990 to see where it was then, to see just what a precipitous drop rates have done. This is not current. The last week, rates have fallen clear off this chart. You've probably followed some of that in the news. Right now, even though rates are that low, we're probably feeling kind of good that we're not in the market because we can't even find a price point right now. It's so wacky. That's a bond term, wacky. But you can see where the trend went and where rates went, and it was a great time to be in the market. I want to, not trying to curry favor here, it's the truth, we had set up some schedules to get this done, and some of them were a little more delayed than others, and your treasurer said, "I want this to get done." Things look good. So thank you, Nicole, for motivating all of us to get that done. Also on here, I think you'll see on page three, orders by investors. This is a very interesting sheet, if you want to know. This shows you that the district participated in the national financial markets, because these are all big-time investors that wanted your bonds, and so congratulations for that. You know, when we do these bond sales, we're always hoping that there will be enough buyers and enough big buyers to really push the rates down, and in this particular case, we were thrilled to see that all the best names were in here. So highly desirable bonds. The rest of the information is, you know, sort of administrative paperwork. I will tell you that the sale went as we expected it to go well. We pushed real hard for lower rates, we put a little pressure on the underwriter, we got the investors a little upset, and they came down lower, and everything worked out great. So it was a great, great transaction. I know that you had additional information. I have not seen it, Nicole, because I was on the road.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to mention to the board to just kind of put things in perspective. So when we had the resolutions, we were estimating percentage interest rates at 4%. And then when we had some preliminary numbers right after the ballot issue, so November the 13th, we were estimating right around 3.15% based on where values were and where we thought, and 1.78 mils where we thought we were going to end up. So we ended up at 2.49%, which is over $16 million savings to the taxpayer. So that's a really big deal, and it's 0.17 mils savings from that time. So yeah, we're overall very pleased with how things turned out. Hopefully, they get this coronavirus stuff sorted out, because that's just a mess all over, but for the bond market and for us selling our bonds, we worked out, made out pretty well with it, so.
Are there any questions for me?
Hearing none. We're just really grateful for all the work that you did, and I think you would concur that we really owe Nicole a big debt gratitude. Debt, I'll use a financial word. We owe her a big debt to her and her team, I know, many people, so thank you.
Well, it was a pleasure working for the district. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. And that page three is an interesting, like, to see all the orders that came in.
I think it's great. Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item 5.02, a capital update, and Mr. LaRose is going to start that off.
Thank you so much. Just if I can get this to work correctly. Turn it on. Got it. All right. So I'm going to start out by just sharing what the next five years looks like in terms of where the money goes for capital. We generated about 9.2 million, you see at the bottom there. I just wanted to highlight that most of that is going to buildings in site, and those last two categories, financing. So you've got anywhere from, what, 71% to 86% in those three categories. When you look at the past year and this upcoming year, these are the categories within building and site improvements, and typically, we spend over 70% devoted to the three that I've highlighted in red, roughing HVAC inside, and that holds true today. So 77% is what we spent this past year, FY '20, and we're projecting 87% for FY '21. Talking a little bit about the Facility Master Plan updates, Central College demolition, as you recall, was a recommendation from the Facility Master Planning Committee. Our goal was to complete the demolition prior to winterheading. So that just shows you the site and all the pavement that came out. This is what it looks like today, completed in December, and we are working on a package for finished grading and seating to be completed this spring. We opened Central's Sunlight Cafe. So that opened February 18th. This is just a view from the dining area looking out. It's in the, what they call the hox nest, the old store, school store. So this is a view of the dining area, and this is just a view looking back at the servary. We currently have revised North's project to get the cost down. We recently had that approved by the city, and we have issued a contract, so that'll be getting underway soon. Moving on to South, the red is what has been identified, as you know, as Phase 1. It's that new west wing just west of the cafe, and then the Ox Gym converted to instructional space, and then expanding the academic wing, shown in purple, continue that into the Ox Gym area. So the addition is 37,000 square feet west of the kitchen, and then the connector, and the second floor of the Ox Gym generates another 23,000 additional square footage to South High School. This is rendering of what was projected that the new entrance would look like in the back of the building. One of the requirements that we received during the program of requirements from staff was we have a more prominent entry in the back of the building. So this is a rendering of what it's to look like. Again, you see off to the right that entry at a 45-degree angle from the building. This is where we were in August, just planning for the pad, the foundation work, and this is, seven months later, this is where we were a few weeks ago. So a lot has happened in seven months. This is just showing you the color banding that provides some visual interest that wraps around the high walls of the gymnasium, the new gymnasium. Again, a view as you're driving into that back parking lot, the new building entrance, closer view. This is taking you inside, so this is standing in that atrium, and then looking off to the right would be that lobby area off of the gym itself, and in the back, in that dark area is where the athletic director offices would be, will be. Rendering of what that will look like, and this is looking east toward the existing portion of the building. The status of where we are in the gym, seating capacity, I think it goes roughly from 1,400 to 1,777, so we are expanding capacity. The mezzanine that you to 1,777, so we are expanding capacity. The mezzanine that you see in the background is where the, the wrestling area will be. So, we have a lot of the, the above ceiling work completed. You see the ductwork. You see that first layer of paint on. This is actually standing on that mezzanine at the, looking at the wrestling area. A view from the wrestling across to the bleachers on the other side. This is the corridor that separates the existing part of the building on the right. It also includes an expansion of the kitchen, and then the, the gym area being on the left. Again, a lot of above-ceiling work completed, prime painting completed, door frames installed. So, this next phase, starting to focus on interior finishes, interior work, studs, in-wall, in-wall plumbing electric, drywall. That's what we're looking at over the next few months. So, the status of the, of a typical locker room, there's four new locker rooms, a typical restroom shower, the training room. You can see that we're starting some interior stud wall work. North elevation of that athletic wing adjacent to the stadium. This is standing in the practice fields, looking at the west and south elevation of the, of the building expansion. Moving to the connector corridor and the OX gym conversion to academic space, the removal of the temporary wall that, that was temporary for decades, that you see removed on the left portion of the screen. And then, off to the right is the work that is connecting the existing academic wing into the new OX gym. So, this is the first floor of the OX gym connector. It includes nine classrooms on the first floor, and you can see the vast amount of space between those classrooms for, we've termed that project-based learning space. Eleven classrooms on the second floor, total of 20 classrooms in this, this, the OX gym and the connector. So, this was the OX gym in August after removal of the, of the south wall. This is where we were last week, putting in that second floor, starting to frame up for the windows. This is the, the second floor that's been added now. You see those, those cutouts that, that are allowing light, the two new skylights we put in to provide light to that first-floor area where there's no windows in that center space. Just a view looking up through those openings in the skylights. So, standing first-floor OX gym, the cutout that will go into the, the new connector. So, this is standing, looking across, so this is the connector addition. In the background is the existing building. Those studs in the back are, it's a temporary wall where, where we removed the former stairway. So, this is the future courtyard that will be enclosed once we make that connector expansion. Status of the connector. If you remember, we talked about nature's elements for our design inspiration. This first phase is the, is water. Will we, subsequently, for the next phases, we'll be dedicating other elements for our inspiration for these other, other existing wings. But this is one of the highlights with the water wing, as we're calling it. This is, this is that glass wall that will be part of the connector on the inside of the courtyard. It's, it's actually something that Rotary is looking to, to fund for us. This is just a reminder of, of an applique that we added to the curtain wall that's adjacent to the stadium. So, it'll be a similar, a similar type of thing for the waterfall Inside the first-floor connector, excuse me, the block wall is the new stairway. The wall to the right of that will be another glass curtain wall. Second, second floor of the connector, getting ready to pour that slab. Southeast elevation, looking toward the Academic and Richmond Center. Again, in between the concrete, the new concrete block wall will be a glass curtain wall. So, we are on time. We are on budget. Substantial completion is scheduled for December 1. That gives us just under nine months, and we are looking to relocate staff over the, the winter holiday break. And then, immediately after, open up Phase Two for, to start construction. And then, this area in green highlights that second phase. So, a lot to do in the next nine months. Moving to Annhurst. So, this is the existing form plan. As you know, we're looking to take the open concept classroom, the open classroom concept and convert those to hard walls. These classrooms average anywhere from 650 to 750 square feet. We are moving that to OFCC standards of 900 square feet, 1,200 square feet for kindergarten rooms, which means those academic pods that are showing six classrooms will be reduced to four, as shown in this rendering, in this four plan. So, the light green is the, the classrooms, and then, that new wing off to the right is the building addition of 14,000 square feet. So, as we start to look at our, for our design inspiration around Annhurst, you can see how much land is occupied with Sharon Woods that's flanking Annhurst. So, we were seeking our design inspiration from, from nature at Sharon Woods. We also had the opportunity to, to speak with students, a student group. What I've highlighted in red are things that we've incorporated into this schematic design phase. We will get to the others in subsequent phases, but these just highlight the schematic design, which most of that is, is a request for more space, bigger classrooms, windows. A lot of it is what we heard when we interviewed students at Point View. I've highlighted off to the right in yellow, this was, this was from staff and students, a treehouse, which we thought fit well with the, the inspiration from Sharon Woods. So, we've pulled this pic as what has become our design inspiration for the treehouse. Just a closer view. So, it's a, a glass treehouse with a spiral staircase. So, this is the treehouse between the existing building and the new wing that we're putting in. It includes feedback from the students to have this treehouse indoors and outdoors, so it serves as both. This is a rendering from the south entrance of that new wing, looking across the atrium and into that, and, and this is preliminary, so much more work to be done here, but it gives you a general idea of, of what we're looking at. A view from the existing building, looking down the hallway of the new wing. Second floor of the treehouse looking out. And this spiral staircase going up to that second level. Typical classroom. One of the challenges is, if you recall, those walls, those exterior walls are angled. So, we're putting, we're putting the windows at an angle with the walls in terms of a drop ceiling. We're going to have to jog that drops, drop ceiling a bit to get the proper clearance, and you can see what we're looking to do is maybe highlight that soffit area the same color as, as one of the accent walls. Moving to the new elementary school site. So, this is a plan showing how that, how that may sit on the site. We've been working with Minerva Park. In terms of traffic flow, you can see bus entry, an exit, as well as a car entry on the left, and then there's, there's a loop that expands around to an opening that we negotiated with MI on this deal for the car exit. So, we've got the cafe there at the top, the gym, and then two, two academic wings. And then, the, the light blue is the classroom. So, there's the total of 24 classrooms for K-5. That, that gives us our 600 student capacity. So, that second floor, that's the media center in orange, that'll be a glass-wrapped Preliminary view of what that may look like. So, I think you've heard me talk about design inspiration for this location, former amusement park. These are some photos that we've been able to, to obtain from our Google search that became design inspiration for us, looking at elements, as well as the, the housing that MI has put in around that site. So, looking at the elevations, and what we've come up with is, this is an elevation of, of the new building, showing sloped roofs that supports the structures that were at the amusement park. The housing around the, around the school itself, you see the turrets that are part of, that were components of facilities built with the amusement park. You can see the bump outs that have that residential feel. Just a perspective of, of what that may look like. You can see how we've tried to break up the, the length of that building. In between those two academic wings, there's a, a glass stairwell, and then it, if you recall from the, the site plan, it, it actually is a bit of an angle to it, so that's the, it's, it's not linear all the way across there. So, it helps break up the space, giving it that residential feel to feel more like the development that's, that's surrounding the property. The bottom is the back of the building. There's a glass curtain wall to the right that is the cafe experience. So, the top is the front, so the turret, just left of the turret would be the main entrance. The administrative space would be the bottom left, the media center the top left, and then the two academic wings to the right. And we're actually playing around with some color on, on these bump outs, the use of different materials. The bump outs would be metal, so if there's an opportunity to maybe integrate color into these spaces, the goal is to make it more, more enjoyable for, for the target audience, which is those K through 5th graders. So, not making it look so commercial, having an element of more fun to it. The back of the building, the two bump outs. Not that this is what we're doing. It's really just showing you opportunities to, to provoke a discussion and, and get your thoughts as Some views inside. So, again, going back to the amusement park, the park gateway, you see at the top with the, with the arch, and then the, the curves within the scenic railway roller coaster that was part of the theme park. You see how that's integrated into the view of the interior corridor. Also, we've been studying Dr. Seuss, and going back to, a feedback from the students. They love the idea of having these small spaces, whether they're, it's a cave or, or a chill, a chill zone, as they call it, but it's, it's something that they feel that can be their own. So, we're looking, and, and again, looking at Dr. Seuss, the, the small areas that he uses quite frequently in his books, maybe how, how we could possibly integrate that into, into the building. So, this is just showing how that inspiration is working with some of our stairwells. And this is the stairwell that, between the, the two academic wings. Typical classroom. Cubbies for the, for the students, built-ins for staff, sinks in each classroom at the new elementary. So, the schedule, the, the, there's four phases that, that the OFCC requires to provide feedback on, which we would subsequently bring to the board for approval. We have submitted the program of requirements and the schematic design to the OFCC. We're just awaiting feedback from them, but we are, we are moving forward. So, we're currently in the design development stage, which is taking schematic into detailing that, the next phases, then converting that to construction drawings that could be built. So, we are targeting September for a contract award date, and then substantial completion for the new elementary would be July of '22, allowing classes to begin August of '22, and then July of '21 for Phase One of Annhurst. We're still trying to figure out how to make this work in two years at Annhurst, given that it's an existing building and, and how we, we move students into the new wing. And so, the, the target is, can we do this in two, two years? It'd be two, between two and three years to, to make this work, but we're looking at, at two years. Thank you. We welcome, we welcome any feedback you have.
Would you please read the last slide?
Go ahead.
No. Tremendous. Board members, any comments, questions, any thoughts?
A couple of thoughts. I don't have a lot of questions for you at this time, and I do want to thank Scott for the latest tour that we took at South. I left there and I was just so excited. If there are cameras in the parking lots, I'm in trouble because I like to drive around and around the building and look at it. So, it's grand to go inside and see what all is going on. But, one of the things that strikes me over and over again is the use of light in the facilities. And I think that it's, it's a wonderful human thing to do, and it goes in line with a lot of your design inspiration work. That's really important, and I focus on that a lot when I talk to people in the community about it. Just because we work within a budget doesn't mean what we create needs to be drab or overly utilitarian. What we're doing is creating space within the budgets that are created, that are enjoyable to be in, and that are infused with light, and that provide different spaces in different sizes to meet different needs. And that's hugely important as we look at human development. That is exciting. The Minerva Park building, I love the idea, and I actually spent a lot of my growing up time in Minerva Park, and my house was where the trolley turned around. Are you looking at infusing arts and crafts components, arts and craft styling? Because the new houses that are built down there have hints of arts and crafts styling within them. And so, I see some of that, and I'm wondering if you're looking at that incorporating some of the arts and crafts design components in that as well.
Can you, can you help me better understand the arts and craft component you're talking about?
Yeah, sure. So, when you look at the porches on the new houses, you see those columns that taper
Yes.
from the top down. That's, that's a typical arts and crafts style.
Okay.
Column style. The square and the taper. So, that's very much arts and crafts. The, the type of roof that you see on those houses, that's a typical arts and crafts approach. In the roller coaster approach that you showed, that is clearly very contemporary, but I saw ghosts of arts and crafts styling within that. So, as you look at coloring and so forth, you might want to take a look at arts and crafts palette. Some of those are way too dull for what you're looking for, but I think that harkening back to the arts and crafts time period, which would have been at the tail end of the amusement park, might be interesting, especially since those houses are built with arts and crafts styling.
So, the, so if you notice from the, the rendering, the, trying to move away from the, the red brick that you typically associate with a school, so the, the exterior colors would be more in line with what you see with the surrounding houses. We'll take a look at We'll take a look at the columns you're talking about. You didn't see that. But keep in mind, this is some preliminary work.
Yep, that's why I brought it up.
Still working on this, so, but...
This is very exciting. Thank you.
Appreciate the feedback.
Quick question, Mr. LaRose. Thank you for that. I'm just wondering, in this process, obviously, you know, you're talking to students, you're talking to staff all the time, but just to help us lay it out for ourselves and the community, are there particular points of staff feedback with schematic drawings, or how is the staff getting to contribute to the design?
Yeah, great question. We've been working a lot with Tabby at Ann Hurst. In fact, we're currently reviewing the furniture package with her. She's been taking that back. We're going to be providing her drawings. Typically, what we, similar to what we did at Point View, we had provided drawings, put that in the staff lounge to promote feedback. And from that, we would, you know, re-energize our process and see about putting that feedback into the design. So I've met, I know you've met once with staff. I've met once with staff. This is really fresh off the press, so that will be the next phase, is to get that in front of the staff for feedback, but yes.
Thanks. So I appreciate all your hard work here. I think it looks amazing. I've really enjoyed watching things come to life. Mr. Dorn and I went to Central last week and had a cup of coffee in the café, and one thing I noticed the whole time we were there, it was busy. Like, there were kids always coming in and respectfully coming in, but grabbing a cup of coffee. It was neat. So if you guys haven't had a chance, Mr. Dorn will buy you a cup of coffee or a snack because they're going to have food there soon. More food? I'm joking, Scott.
No, she's not.
That's right. No, it's been great. I really appreciate it. It's beautiful.
Thank you.
Comments, thoughts, questions?
That actually reminds me to, just one more kudo. I have a child at South, and when she heard you were adding on, you know, the district would be adding on, she said, "Mom, please, like, they cannot take the windows away." I mean, I wasn't on the board at that time, but I so appreciate that. And Nancy said it, but like, the kids really do think about that. They like to see daylight. It really makes a difference for them, and I'm sure it does for the staff, too. So I especially appreciate that in the design, that we're giving them some daylight. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd affirm that as well. I mean, you can only sit so long under, no matter how upgraded the lighting system is, there's a health benefit, I think, an emotional health benefit if nothing else. I just really appreciate the work that you all and your teams have continued to do. And I missed in the presentation the one thing about where in the new elementary school is the roller coaster going? I didn't...
Playground?
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 I would say that, I'm sure you all would agree, and I know my fellow board members' staff would agree, that once again, we really have to thank the community for voting and funding and affirming much of what we're doing. And we just, again, say to the community and staff, thank you for the support that allows the creativity to begin to take place. So thank you to you all, and thank you to folks out there, the staff members that you're talking with, taking time, generating ideas. The creativity piece is just so important. The word I thought of, you were, you're just trying to avoid an institutional feel. And I would say to you, some of our newer buildings don't have that, and you've done, you all have done that. And so we're very excited. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a little bit. I just want to thank Jeff and Scott and the entire team because this is a snapshot of the biggest parts of the capital improvement. Underneath this is all the regular stuff that's got to happen over the summertime when we have all those free weeks to work on stuff, from HVAC systems to asphalt to everything else that is going to happen. And so, you know, they're picking up this project, these projects, on top of what they normally do, and it's a lot of courage, a lot of ambition, and I'm very appreciative of their work and everybody that's part of that. So thanks for all that.
Thank you.
You know, it's going to be a lot this summer.
Appreciate it. Moving on to Agenda Item 6.01, Public Comments. We have no one signed up this evening for this section. Agenda Item 7.01, Resolution Accepting Amounts and Rates for Tax Year 2020 Collection Year 2021 as Determined by the Budget Commission in Authorizing the Necessary Tax Leavisings and Certifying Them to the County Auditor. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Marshall, will you explain what I just said?
Absolutely. Thank you, President Velardo, members of the board. So last month, we had a resolution on to amend the 2019 tax year rates, and so those are 2019 tax year collection and calendar year 2021, or 2020, sorry. So this is the resolution for tax year 20, which is the current year that we're in. The Budget Commission with Franklin County approved these rates, and so they're asking the board to concur with the rates. So they set the rates every year so that they're able to collect property taxes. So as the board knows, because of House Bill 920, as values go up, they adjust the effective tax rates down on voted levies. So that's what this process is doing through the Budget Commission. They also set the bond rates to match the payment schedule that we have for our debt. And so this will allow the county auditor to collect property taxes for us for calendar year 2021.
And they set these rates?
They set these rates.
So they just are asking us to approve their set rates?
To concur, yes.
How generous.
And we will likely see an amendment in December after values are set because 2020 is an update year. So we'll likely have an amendment to these rates.
Okay.
Then, too. So, but for now, this is what's set.
Great, thank you. Any questions or anything? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes, 7.02, Amended Appropriations for All Funds FY 2020. Could I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you much. Anything to add? Do you want to share anything but, right?
Yeah, I do. I want to talk about...
That's what I thought. Okay, yes, please.
Thank you, President Velardo, members of the board. So we have a few adjustments to the appropriations, annual appropriations resolution for fiscal year 2020. First, we have additional budget requests for the Principals Fund, the 018 Fund. That's due to a grant that one of our schools received from the Westerville Education Foundation that wasn't originally anticipated as part of their budget. We also have, because we issued bonds that we actually close on on March 11th, our first interest payment will be due June 1st, and so we're appropriating the amount for that first interest payment this fiscal year. And then in the Building Fund, we're adding an amount to allow Jeff and his team to enter into contracts for those expenditures with the design work and different things that we're doing. As the board knows, we did approve a reimbursement resolution back in February of 18, so there are some expenditures that have come out of the General Fund that will be reimbursed from the Bond Fund. So these appropriations will allow us to do that. The other thing that we have on here in the General Fund is $250,000 to allow us to purchase, well, enter into a lease agreement for modular classrooms for Mark Twain Elementary. So this will allow us to enter into the lease agreement and also put in sidewalks, awnings, all the things that we need to do to get those up and running for the next school year.
Okay.
Are there any questions?
Any questions about any of that? Hearing none. Did you have a question? I'm sorry. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. Moving on to Agenda Item 8, Personnel Consent Agenda. I'd like to take these unless somebody would prefer not to.
You don't need to...
I don't need that resolution anymore, do I? Okay. Yes, sir.
You do need a motion and a second.
You threw me all off.
Sorry.
This is all on tape now.
It was my fault. I came up to the podium too quickly, Mr. Velardo.
I was on a roll tonight.
Sorry.
Okay, so what am I doing? Oh, asking for a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Yes, sir. Would you like to share? I'm going to turn my microphone off now.
President Velardo, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg, it's my pleasure to, tonight, present for your consideration the Personnel Consent Agenda. Some of the highlights include, we do have two retirements. At that time of year, we have, Ms. Patricia Bartlett is retiring from her PE position at Blunden Middle School. She has provided Westerville with 33 years of experience. We also have Ms. Stephanie Martin. Stephanie is retiring from her science position at Central High School. She has provided Westerville City Schools with over 19 years of service in the classroom, and as well as many of you know, her contributions as a champion for Challenge Day and a lot of other activities. So we're excited. She did indicate her willingness and desire to stay active in those roles, so we're going to take her up on that offer and moving forward. We do have one resignation from the classified position and two resignations from classified substitute positions, but I would like to make a note that they are resigning so that they can take a contract driving position with the district. We have the employment of 14 individuals to a number of classified extended school year and summer school intervention positions. And finally, in the Licensed Employment Section, we have the employment of a number of people to various supplemental and classified people activity program positions, and also a few positions to go ahead and fill some of our summer intervention programs as well. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions?
I have one. Are we in good shape for summer school?
I believe so, yes. I talked to Dr. Ebrecht today. He says he's hired a great group of folks, and so I trust his judgment, and I think we're going to have a wonderful staff and supportive group over there to keep our kids doing well.
Great, great. Thank you.
Any others? Please call the roll.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. Moving on, Agenda Item 9.01, A Final Reading Policy 1520, Employment of Administrators. And I think we can take these first three together. I need a motion and a second for that, though. This is the final reading for policies, employment of administrators, employment of professional staff, and employment of substitutes. Do you want to do a real quick, just remind us, remind people here what these are for?
Sure. The main parts of these three policies was the fact that the new legislation is requiring the district to notify the treasurer that all of these employees have the proper licensure in order to be compensated for these positions.
This is just really to affirm a proper licensure?
Correct.
Is what I understand it is?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So I need a motion and a second to take them together.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing no discussion, please call the roll.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes, and a motion and a second to vote on them.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. Moving on, Agenda Item 9.04, Final Reading, New Middle School Course of Study, Global Game Changers, which we discussed last time, is really expanding the global awareness, education, taking that to middle school to help them prepare for possibly introducing them to the global scholars path in high school. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, thoughts, concerns? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. Moving on, Agenda Item 10.01, A First Reading Policy 3120.05, Employment of Personnel in Summer School and Adult Education Programs. We don't need a motion or a second, this is a first reading. Dr. Hopkins?
Good. If it's okay with the board, the first four items there, 3120.05, .08, 4120, and 4120.08 are all very, very similar. And what they do is, as I just referenced the others, these are additional policies that we needed to revise that revolve from the enactment of House Bill 491, Limiting Treasurer Liability Regarding the Confirmation of Employee Licenseur. The law requires notification of valid licensure to be provided to the treasurer before these employees can receive payment. And also, one other addition to Policy 4120 also references to highly qualified, which was previously required with current Ohio licensure requirements for some of our Title I 8s in those particular areas.
Any questions at this point? Hearing none. Agenda Item 10.06, I'm sorry.
And if I can just, if I can just interrupt really quickly, 4124 is just a little bit different in that one there for the employment contract. Policy 4124 reflects the changes made in Senate Bill 216. It specifically speaks to the contract status of non-teaching employees and their subsequent contract sequence that they'll be eligible for.
Okay, thank you. That was 10.05. That's the first reading for that one.
Correct, yes, thank you.
Now, 10.06, First Reading, New Course of Study, Art Making and Self-Expression.
Good evening, President Velardo, members of the board. This goes along with Mr. LaRose's presentation, actually, this particular course, because it was developed in part because next year, Westerville South High School will not be able to offer 3D art because of the renovations. They don't have access to our kiln. This course is modeled off of a course in another central Ohio district, which focuses less on the skill of art and more on the reflective nature of art. Art Making and Self-Expression is a place where entry-level students can excel and students with higher level skills and big ideas can achieve their individual goals. It is an introduction to various media processes and pertinent visual artists and artworks. In addition, it's an exploration of individual insights. There's a lot of vowels in that, sorry about that. Emphasis in this course will be placed on personal self-expression and an appreciation of arts media. It is designed for the student who enjoys art but may not wish to major in art. It is written as a 912 course, so students wouldn't necessarily have to take art foundations, but they could certainly if they wanted to. This is another benefit, and I think this is something we'll be seeing in the future from art, is now that we have a number of FTE at our middle school for that foundational art course. We have not changed FTE in our high school, so it's allowing for more opportunities for various art courses, as we have seen that start. And lastly, mediums explored will include, but are not limited to, paint, drawing materials, ink, mixed media, and paper mache, which is included in the units of 2D, 3D, and collaborative projects, and artist-led projects, which are the names of the units. Questions about this course? And Amy Rausch, who is not with us this evening, was the lead on this. She was the teacher who really helped to develop this and worked with other art teachers. So I want to thank her specifically.
Questions? Yes, sure.
Quick question. You mentioned 3D art at South, that we wouldn't be able to offer that there, but I assume 3D art will come back then?
Correct, yes, yes.
So, okay, so I'm just thinking through the FTE math on that one.
Yes, yes, and we do have a wealth of opportunities for our art students, but this just gives another one, so it's not, you know, additional FTE is not required.
If I recall correctly, one of the main problems at South during the renovation time is the inability to use a kiln.
Correct.
So that's, you know, as Amy was looking at what was going to be happening over this time, the impetus for this course was the South renovation work, but the course is not designed as a temporary course. It's not only for the time period that South is being renovated. This, the idea, as it was fleshed out, and as really began, as Amy and the rest of the individuals involved really began to look at student needs around art, this became a viable component and also one that can be offered during the renovation period. So it's a different take for us, but, you know, speaking as a person who loves art but is not particularly good at producing art, the idea of reflecting on art would be very, very appealing to a person like me, I know.
I think your butterfly was beautiful. I think it was beautiful. I saw it on social media. They were all lovely.
Thank you. Any other?
Not all of them, right?
Well, you know.
Sorry.
Reverend Bell, do you have anything to say?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. The other artiste. Yes, ma'am.
So, 3D art will be gone for two years or one year?
I think that's a better question for Mr. LaRose, actually. One. Oh, I'm seeing one. Okay. That was our impression, but thank you. I wanted to double-check. That's a good question. Thank you.
Any other? Okay. Agenda Item 10.07, first reading, New Course of Study, Race and Ethnic Studies.
And I don't want to take these three courses necessarily all together, but I do want you to know that there are several overlaps. High school teachers of Social Studies have been working collaboratively over the past several years to develop courses that are more reflective of our student population. You know, specifically, it started with North. And honestly, they've had kind of several iterations over the course of the past several years of saying, "What can we do to meet the needs of our students?" They've worked with colleagues throughout central Ohio and with other members of the school community to create these courses. And I would like to thank them. They have been waiting very, very patiently. So, from South, we have Kelly Stalker. I asked them to come up here. They said no. From Central, Kyle King. Our district is Dr. Jill Williams. And from North, we have John Sands, who I might add, his wife is expecting today. And he's here. So, thank you. And?
That's dedication right there. That's dedication.
And Kat, I need to look at your name when I say it. Kat Statthulis. Did I get that right? Yes. Okay. It makes me nervous to stand up here and then pronounce names. So, they have been phenomenal these past few months and years, working on courses like this. So, thank you all. And to show the passion that they're here on a beautiful Monday evening, that just goes a long way, I think. Also, I'm sorry, before I get to, one more thing. I did learn that several years ago, we did have courses that teachers brought forth. However, during my tenure, we haven't been in a position nor we just haven't had courses that teachers have said, "Hey, I want this one. What about this?" We are working with students. We feel like this is a need that our students have identified. This is a hole or a gap in our course offerings. And so, I just feel that it's super exciting to see the shift of, instead of, hey, we have these new standards. We need to update a course. And kind of going through that process, it's really been a grassroots effort led by the people that you're seeing here today. So, it's just been a very exciting opportunity for me to see that happen. So, thank you. So, about this course specifically, Race and Ethnic Studies: The Quest for Justice in the U.S. is a study of the historical development and current state systems of oppression and their impacts. Per Ohio's Historical Thinking Skills for High School, this course draws upon several advanced placement courses, including U.S. History, World History, European History, and then Sociology and Ethnic Studies. As you'll see, we really don't have Ethnic Studies content standards in Ohio, so we look to Indiana. And we also look to the Social Justice Standards from Teaching Tolerance, which is a very well-known national organization. Race and Ethnic Studies supports the growing need for students to have additional opportunities to explicitly learn about and address various racial, ethnic, and other kinds of diversity and to explore shared identities. Students will gain a better understanding of other cultures while learning respect and tolerance. And those are just kind of bits and pieces of the course rationale and the course description to give you a pretty broad understanding of what the course is about. Now, I'd like to open this up to questions for this particular one.
Any questions on this one?
Yes. So, this will be offered at all three of the high schools? Or?
Where we are right now is, we had originally planned on offering certain courses in certain buildings. So, we're thinking for next year that this would be offered at Central and South. And then, the hope would be, moving forward, that these would be offered everywhere.
Thank you.
I love it.
Yeah. I just think this is really important. And I appreciate the sensitivity from the team and the awareness of the changing demographics of our community. And the fact that Ohio doesn't have these standards and that we are jumping in there. Once again, Westerville will lead Ohio down the path, perhaps. So, I like that a lot. Thank you. Okay. Agenda Item 10.01, first reading, New Course of Study, African-American History Since 1895.
Okay. At this end, I will say that these are all elective courses. I failed to mention that, as is the art course as well. This social studies elective course, designed to be taken in tandem with African-American literature, which is next, presents students with opportunities to examine African-American history based on a foundation of skill and content standards provided by the Ohio Department of Education and the College Board. So, back to those AP. There's, as you noticed, there is a lot of AP references. And several of these teachers have taught those AP courses or IB courses. Building on primary source analysis, historical argumentation, and synthesis skills, the course framework centers on developing a sophisticated understanding of the African-American community in the United States. And I do want to read too, from the course rationale, African-American history is an essential course for all students who are interested in a deeper understanding of American history and to prepare students to enter a changing world by developing historical reasoning, civil discourse, and cultural appreciation skills. Ultimately, the course will teach all students that African-American history is one of leadership, excellence, and perseverance that has pushed American society to live up to the ideals of the Declaration of Independence. You can tell history teachers wrote this, which I am a history teacher too, and move toward a more perfect union. Rather than a divisive topic, African-American history should be celebrated as a vital part of American history and therefore, a critical part of any social studies curriculum. And I would, although it's been, we have had a few conversations, I would like John Sands, if I may, to come up and explain why 1895 was picked. Surprise! There's a lot of thought put into 1895. And we had a great conversation about it at Curriculum Council. And I think no one can say it better than you.
Hello? So, we chose 1895 because, in talking to students, they were hesitant to engage the full African-American history because they, in their words, "We've learned all about slavery. We know a lot about it. We know about Reconstruction and its failures. And we want to learn the good stuff now." And certainly, there will be a lot of talk and a foundation set in all of those topics. But we chose 1895 because it is Booker T. Washington's address to the Atlanta Symposium or Exposition. And it sets out Booker T. Washington's vision for African-Americans' place moving forward. And it also sets up a bit of a feud between Booker T. Washington and W.E.B. Du Bois. And they have differing views on where African-Americans should go in the 20th century. So, we wanted to make sure we approached it from that leadership and perseverance perspective without imposing a deficit or a deficit mindset as to the African-American experience in the 20th century. So, we thought 1895 kind of allowed us to do that and look forward to all the ways the African-American community has led throughout the 20th and now 21st century. Was that what I said last time?
Thank you very much, John. I would now like to open this up for questions. So, maybe he shouldn't have left. Questions over this course?
I want to applaud something that you read, that we have written here, that I think how you phrased this was, "Changing the world by developing historical reasoning, civil discourse," which today seems to be a contradiction in terms. But, "Historical reasoning, civil discourse, and cultural appreciation skills." I just applaud you all more than I can really express that you are trying to wed, trying to wed together, accurate historical studies with, and what can we do today? And how can we carry on these discussions? Because I find it, I find it sad, but I think accurate that we even have to put in a sentence rather than a divisive topic. This should be a critical part. So, I applaud you all for acknowledging, you know, that we live in a divisive. And it is too simplistic to say, "If you don't learn from history, you'll repeat it." But it is also accurate to say it. So, thank you for that part.
So, one quick question. Did you talk to students and ask them what they wanted to learn about several times? How did that come about? Just, sorry. Yeah. Whoever wants, yeah.
You need a microphone.
You have to come to the microphone. Or take it back there.
They want to get you on film. Oh, yeah.
Just like students, they slip-rolling.
Okay. So, I know at South, and I know at the other schools because I borrowed their surveys, that we surveyed students. And at South, I did my students. I had other government teachers do their students. And I had, Mrs. Dietrich does a cultural studies course. And we thought that that might be similar to, you know, people who would be interested in a course like this. And so, she surveyed her students as well, just trying to get a broad idea of what topics they might want to talk about.
Hi, I'm Kat Statthulis. I teach English at Westerville North. And this, for us, started several years ago with John and I just realizing how much we teach alike. I was teaching in AP Language, Ta-Nehisi Coates' Between the World and Me, which deals with a letter to his son after the shooting of Trayvon Martin. And John was teaching a course where they were having real conversations about race in America. And we were like, "We should do something together." So, we did. And it just started off as a collaborative unit. And when we did that, the kids kind of went crazy. They were emailing our principal saying, "We need more discussions like this in our classroom. This is what real learning looks like." And so, we took what was really like a two- or three-week unit and then purposefully planned, last school year, a much broader understanding of what we were doing. John teaching contemporary world issues, and I continued with AP Lang. And we were intentional in how we set up what we were talking about and what we were doing. So, from that, it then turned into, "Hey, let's propose this course." We've gathered students and done face-to-face conversations with them and interviews. We have surveyed them anonymously. What do you want to talk about? What are you interested in learning about? And when we specifically look at race in America, they want to talk about how, like you said, Mr. Velardo, how it is impacting their daily lives. And that's where we are.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Kyle King. I teach Social Studies at Westerville Central High School. For the central version of it, it was first proposed by the students. And it was proposed by the students, and I was part of that about five years ago. I took over the job of being the Black History Month advisor. And as the Black History Month advisor, I got to see how excited the community was and the students were to put on a celebration of Black History. And from that and conversations, it became obvious that there was sort of a gap that the community and the students would like to see something that more represented them. So, there were surveys that were given out following Black History Month. There were other surveys that were given out following other classes that I've taken or I've given, I'm sorry, I've instructed. And from that, we created sort of a grassroots movement led by students and their families that initiated this course. Thank you.
So, the opening act to the Black History Month show at South was about this. Did you know this? It was a setup, it was a classroom. And the kids were saying to the teacher, "We want to learn about us." It was really, it was moving. It was really good. So, I applaud you guys. This is great. I'm glad we're finally doing, I'm sorry it's taken so long.
Any other questions, comments?
Are you going to continue on to talk about the?
Yes, I do have one more course. Yes. No, you're great. And I will say, we, you know, at one point, we looked down the college credit plus option. And so, we have been, you know, as Kyle said, you know, three years and several years, really trying to hit our stride and get this right. And they've spent so many hours and getting so much feedback that we really think we're in a good place. So, thank you. Last and not least, this is the African-American Literature and Composition course. The purpose of this course is to develop a sophisticated understanding of the social role of African-American texts through multiple perspectives, as well as to recognize the influence of African-American literature on identity, culture, socioeconomic status, politics, and ideology. The African-American Literature course intends to make literature relevant to students' lives and challenging to their minds. In a complex world where students must strive to learn how to interpret, challenge, and embrace multiple perspectives, it is imperative that students study a wide variety of literature. And I think this is very important. And I shared this with the students at North, and it had been shared with me from Dr. Williams, is there's an article called "Windows and Mirrors." And I believe it's "Windows and Mirrors and Sliding Doors." But it talks about how not only do you need to see yourself in literature, you know, so that's a mirror, but to see others in literature. And then, how often are, you know, our students of color able to see themselves in literature? And we feel like that's a gap that this course will help to address. When African-American literature has been incorporated into the curriculum, and Kyle kind of alluded to this, it may be limited to a few slavery texts, Harlem Renaissance, Civil Rights writings, and maybe it's only studied during Black History Month. These periods and genres are not representative of all that is African-American literature. Furthermore, African-American experiences are often presented from a deficit perspective, as John mentioned, instead of confirming the incredible experiences of African-American writers, artists, and thinkers who contributed to shaping not only Black literature and culture, but American literature and culture as a whole. And that is the literature course. Additional questions or comments?
I just have a couple of comments. One is how much I appreciate the depth of thought that has gone into the creation of all of these courses. And that, based on what these courses of study look like, I feel absolutely sure we'll see in the implementation of the courses as well. That is hugely important in doing what Rick so eloquently said and the language that you have provided us. Doing that requires such sensitivity and depth of thought that you have provided. So, I want to thank you for your attention to that thus far So, I want to thank you for your attention to that thus far and going forward. I also want to point out to the board that the textbooks are in the back on the table, and I want to be sure that you take a look at those. Hopefully, they can stay till the end of the board meeting.
Of course, yes.
And you guys don't have to stay, but stay till the end of the board meeting so that those books can be looked at. I'm particularly thankful for the Norton Anthology, because there's nothing better than a Norton Anthology. Love Norton Anthology. And the other thing I wanted to say is, I am delighted to see us returning, going back to the future, if you will, to the time when teachers could bring forward their ideas and courses could be developed around those courses of great thought and great impact on student lives. So, this is, this is a watershed series of courses in a lot of ways, this whole evening, this particular group of courses, and the art course as well, as we look at how we progress into the future.
Thank you.
I just wanted to echo what other folks have said. I work in the history field. What can I say? I've worked on histories of people of color for 20-plus years, and I just tremendously appreciate this, appreciate not just the specific history and literature that you're bringing, but also some of those historical thinking skills, critical thinking skills, discourse around difficult topics that will certainly come out of this. So, it is something that young people are really hungry for, so I appreciate you listening to them. Yeah, thanks for that.
And I think I would just affirm a lot of that, that it seems to me we are trying to take some of our studies out of silos in which we have been in for a long time, and I think it's even okay to say that sometimes when you ask people to step out of those silos, that is not the most comfortable thing. And so, we acknowledge that upfront and recognize that some hard discussions might need to take place. And I would say that even if some students are not hungry for it, we might want to feed them some good things anyway. And the only other thing that I have, this is just, you know, this is just me, the only thing I think along these lines is, my hope, one of my hopes, is that this will even open the door wider to other significantly underrepresented people, Native Americans and others who have a valid history that is very untold. We're not there yet, you know, it's, but I think that as you continue to open the door, I think we get there. And as I said, I think you go outside the, you go outside the silo, and it can be uncomfortable. But that's okay. Huge thank you to all of you, and, I mean, especially the father-to-be. It's just, you know, what?
It's tomorrow, so we've got.
Oh, well, never mind then.
I'm sorry. I thought it was today. My apologies.
Be in so much trouble if you were.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to say anymore about that. Thank you. Anything else from the team?
Baby number two.
Oh, this is baby number two? Oh, dude, you got this. Oh, no, you're what? Nevermind. That's really good. Anything?
So, real quick, so these are, these three, they are elective courses?
Correct. The final course would count as an English credit as one of the four, but in our junior and senior year, they're all elective English courses, the year-long courses, all meet the requirements for a graduation requirement.
Okay. And once again, as of at least right now, where are we planning on these being offered?
As I mentioned, the first course, the Race and Ethnic Studies, is a semester course, and it's at South and Central, and then the last two courses, American History from 18, or African-American History from 1895, and the African-American Literature course, both being offered at North for next year, and then growing kind of our knowledge base and hopefully expanding those to other, to all of the schools. We have the right people on the bus, most definitely.
Thank you, and thank you for your leadership in helping to guide this whole process.
And Dr. Jill Williams as well.
Thank you, folks.
And Cynthia Devese, who is not with us this evening. She has been a big help as well.
Thank you all around. Thanks for coming. Moving on, agenda item 11.01, out of, overnight and out-of-state field trips. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. I have asked Dr. Reeves to come forward and just share some thoughts with us about overnight trips and so on. Mr. Reeves, sorry.
Thank you.
I keep promoting.
I'll take the honorary degree.
We have to give him an honorary degree sometime, yeah.
Given the great attention that's been provided by the health issues, not only in the United States but around the world, obviously, there have been questions and some concerns about the safety of travel, not only within the United States but outside of the United States. As you see, I think there's one for approval tonight, and one has already been approved. We have two trips coming, we have multiple trips out of state. We have two in particular coming up over spring break that are leaving the country. One is one group of about 17, 18 students, and then chaperones, 21 in all, are headed to Costa Rica, and another group of about 10-plus chaperones are headed to Brussels, Amsterdam, London, and Paris. And so, the travel company that we use a great deal, is a wonderful, wonderful company, probably the most experienced of any company traveling abroad with students, is EF Tours. EF stands for Education First, and so that's what their focus is. They've done this a long time, and we have been in almost daily contact. Our chaperones have been in daily contact with EF Tours, as they are monitoring information coming from the CDC. They are monitoring information coming from the State Department. Last Wednesday, Debbie Meisner, who's our Director of Health and Student Safety, she and I spoke with the representatives from EF Tours to understand, what is your process? What are you monitoring? How are you communicating to family? There was a letter that they sent that went home to all of our families through our chaperones. Last Wednesday night, our group going to Europe, families met together, and only one family has opted to pull their child and pull their student from the list as of today. The other 10, although concerned, said they felt comfortable enough to do that. The Costa Rica families are meeting, actually, this evening to discuss and look at what their options are and all of those things. So, one of the things that the EF Tour really, really looks at is the designation that the State Department gives to various international countries, and there's four different levels that they do. Level one is the easiest, exercise normal precautions when you travel. Level two, exercise increased caution. Level three, reconsider travel. Level four, do not travel. EF Tours will not go to a place that's level three or level four. Currently, as of 5:30 today, because I checked them all, as of 5:30 today, all the countries that our students are set to attend are holding steady at level two. And so, unless that changes, EF Tours contends to move forward, and they travel in about 10 days, around the 20th, give or take is when they leave. And so, coming up against the deadline, because there are some families that, around the country that travel with them, I mean, they're not local, I mean, they're a national company, and you have families that may pull out or postpone their trip, maybe to the summer, they have until Friday to make that decision. And then after that, it's a go unless something changes in that country, so.
Thank you very much. I just thought, board and team, that that would just be helpful for people to know that we are monitoring that very closely, so thank you very much. Any questions, thoughts? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson is absent. Dr. Nastbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Reeves. Agenda item 11.0, did I say yes? I said yes, didn't I? Oh, I said, I thought, okay, thank you. 11.02, resolution approving HVAC improvement at Mark Twain Elementary School. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Dorn, share with us.
Good evening, President Velardo, Vice President Bell, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg and Ms. Marshall. In front of you is a resolution to approve HVAC improvements at Mark Twain Elementary School. The improvements are per the request of our in-house maintenance department, our HVAC team, based on the condition of the existing equipment. The scope of work includes replacement of air handling units 1, 2, and 3, replacement of a return air fan, replacement of a rooftop unit, and also adding five variable air volume reheat units. Bids were solicited in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code on February 10, both on our website and through the dispatch. Two bids were received and publicly read on the 25th. The lowest responsible bid was submitted by Regal Plumbing and Heating Company in the amount of $553,879. That includes the alternate of the rooftop unit. This is the same contractor who completed a similar scope of work at Robert Frost this last summer. The bid was $130,321, or 19% under the estimate. It is being recommended that the board accept the bid for the HVAC improvements at Mark Twain Elementary School this summer.
Thank you. Underestimate, always good words. Any questions, thoughts? Thank you very much. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nastbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. Resolution, excuse me, agenda item 11.03, resolution designating boards authorized representative for capital program construction projects, delegating authority to conduct business related to projects, including change order authority. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. Anything to share on this? I think it's fairly clear to you, anyone?
Well, I can just mention it's fairly standard procedure, because we are, we have several construction projects going on, and so that we're not holding special board meetings on a daily basis. This will allow our team to continue their work.
Thank you. That's just helpful. Not that we would love to meet on a daily basis. Ms. Altman, you wouldn't? Sorry.
Not always possible.
Not always possible. No, thank you. All kidding aside, it's very helpful just to get a quick summary on that. I appreciate it. Any questions or anything? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nastbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. Agenda item 12.01, public comments. We have no one signed up this evening. 13.01, board comments. Do we have anything to share?
No, sir.
No, sir. Congratulations to the Student Education Foundation, those folks, and really, to all of you who have done a lot of work. The crowd has thinned, but it is a mighty, a mighty group that has hung in there with us. We certainly appreciate that. Moving on, agenda item 14.01, the board will meet in regular session on Monday, April 6, 2026 p.m., in the board training room. Also, Monday, April 13, at Westerville North High School for our GEM Awards meeting, which is always really an awesome time if you are thinking about coming out to one. We'd love for you to come out to celebrate our gems. Moving on to agenda item 15.01, a motion to, a motion and a second to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing no discussion, please call the roll.
Dr. Nastbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes, we are adjourned.
7:44. Dr.